Hey, welcome to this evening's special meeting of the Board of Education. Let's call the meeting to order with a roll call, please.
Penny Casimir.
Here.
Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Angela Wilcox.
Here.
Mike Shackleton.
Here.
Gavin Newman.
Here.
Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Thank you. This evening, I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dr. Harris.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we, well, we move to public comment. As in past meetings, I am here at the district office. In case someone wanted to physically come speak during public comment, there is nobody here. We have also enabled the possibility of having someone call and leave a message to be played during public comment. There were no messages received, so we'll declare public comment closed. Before we move on, though, I do want to acknowledge a dedicated board member here on her birthday. Happy birthday to Sandra.
Thank you.
So thank you for spending your time with us. I can't imagine you want to be anywhere else.
Great people, great people to spend my birthday with.
Without further ado, I will turn, we have one agenda item related to our budget, all things related to the budget. So I will turn this over to our administration.
Okay, well, I'll start and I'm going to quickly turn it over to Dave. As board members know, at our last board meeting, we were asked to put together some models, some several different scenarios that the board could certainly discuss and contemplate as we are continuing to prepare the budget for FY '21. Dave has worked diligently over the past several days, over the weekend, trying to get these models put together. And we shared some materials with you yesterday. And he is going to live model some of those different options tonight. So I'm going to turn over to Dave. He's going to walk us through the presentation and then we'll have plenty of time for questions and comments.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Welcome, board members. You know, when I started as a business manager back in 2007, it was right around the time of the Great Recession. And a lot of the financial modeling that I was doing at that time was around sad things. And now we fast forward here to 2020 and we're talking about pandemic and changes in the economy. I'm really hoping that in our years of work together, that I do have the opportunity, rather than being Davy Downer, to actually come to you and say, "Oh, my gosh, we have all of these resources and we're excited about these new programs with an easy-to-balance budget." That being said, let's just get into some of the financial modeling that I've got here for you. And I just want to start, I gave you a lot of background last time at our meeting in talking about this. And I just wanted to start with just reminding you that budgets are our plans. And there's this old saying about, you know, you can have a plan, but as soon as you, as soon as it hits reality, things start to change. And, you know, budgets are plans and plans change and forecasts have to change as well. And when we think back to where we were in January, we were doing some planning and modeling at that time, where we were expecting a normal year, normal finish to the year, a normal startup next year. And we set up some assumptions around what that, what our modeling and the forecasting should be in preparation for the budget. And what I did at that time with the models is actually folded in those assumptions. So what the salary increases were that we were assuming, what CPI tax collection rates were and so forth. So we did that, that was January 2020. And just as a reminder, this is what the results of our committee, the whole meeting, look like in terms of a forecast. So we had a relatively, a relatively stable fund balance, although in the out years, starting to get close to the lower end of our fund balance policy. And just as a reminder, as expenditures go up over time, reserves have to go up as well in order to maintain a consistent fund balance percentage. So that's what's going on there. But things looked decent. Then we get to May and we're dealing with COVID-19 and a pandemic. And so we've had schools closed since middle of March. We're not yet clear exactly what the fall will look like in terms of exactly services that we'll be providing and in which way. Economy is a little bit goofy at the moment. And we're at the time we wanted to be able to talk a little bit about the assumptions that we have in modeling. So what I've done for you here is tried to lay out things that we can control along with some things that we can't really control. And when we think about the assumptions that we model, some things that we can control include our staffing levels and salaries or wage growth that's after existing contracts expire. Some of our spending on purchased services, capital and supplies. And I say some because you'll see this on the what we can't control side either. There are some things in those categories that we have a lot of difficulty controlling, whether they are contracts that we already have in place or whether there are some certain services, for example, outplacement of special education services. We don't always have control about the timing and nature of those particular expenses. I also have on here, things we can't control, structure of some operational factors. You might recall, we did a large transportation presentation. We talked about some of the configuration of our routes, the kinds of services we provide. That's just one example of those things that we have some control around. Of course, we can also control some of our, some of our project spending as an area that we often think about. So on the other side, things that we can't control, well, we can't control a lot of the funding and economic factors that are occurring. So that includes what the Consumer Price Index is, which affects property tax revenues. We can't control tax collection rates or in fact, timing of tax collections. Interest rates, state funding is out of our control, federal funding as well. There are some insurance increases, and it's not just health insurance. Often we think of that as health insurance, but that also includes unemployment insurance and property casualty liability insurance. So we've got some other things like that. So those are some of the things that we can't control. And it's important as we think about what do we choose to do in response to changing economic conditions, that we think about the things that we can't control. And then we try to push on some of the levers of the things that we can control. And so what I have are some of the key levers and secondary levers that we're able to think about. And I've listed some levers that we really can't control, but is an important factor when we start to do some of our modeling. So things like, you know, CPI is an important lever, like when that changes, we, it really can affect the outcome for us. Same thing with state funding. We can't directly control that lever, but it's an important one for us to watch. And we've got some secondary levers. So these are basically sort of taking those assumptions and trying to describe for you, what are the big hitters when it comes to affecting our budget and forecast? And then what are some of the things that are important, but they play a supporting role in our finances? So really, you know, to that effect, I'm going to show you sort of on a one-by-one basis, what some of these different factors, what the impact of these different factors are at a couple of different levels of assumption. So I'll get to that in a second. And I just want to point out a couple of things that I've not modeled here, just to be clear. The district is lined up to have about $690,000 of CARES Act funding available. The timing on that, and we're starting to get more information, we just got a little more information today on this. But there's a simple application process, but then it's going to run through some of our grant, like a grant that we receive from the federal government. It appears that the requirement is going to be that this is to offset additional costs that we have incurred as a result of the pandemic in our response to it, which makes it sound a lot like it is going to be offsetting additional expenses as opposed to existing expenses. So it's not just a new funding source that can replace or be in addition to other local funding that we have. It's going to require that expenses go up for us to access the money. So if I model an increase in revenue, I'd be modeling an increase in expense. They tend to be a wash. So at this point in time, I've not modeled it, but I just want you to be aware, it's not in there, but it is something that we're planning on taking advantage of and we'll have to get all the details on the rules. More to come on that. The other thing is evidence-based funding. This is our primary state revenue stream. So just as you might recall, state funding in total makes up about 10% of our overall budget. And the largest portion of that is the base funding minimum, the evidence-based funding that comes along with that. There are some rules around reductions for evidence-based funding. If the state were to take a whack at that, the first thing that would happen is tier four districts like ours would have to refund any additional funds that we've received above our base funding minimum. That's our guarantee or our hold harmless amount. So anything that we've received above that in the last three years that amounts to around $30,000 for us, if they cut deeper, then it becomes a per pupil reduction across the state. Now, what we're hearing at the moment is that it's more likely that the state will start to tinker with our mandated categorical payments or our MCATs. And the MCATs are really about, over 95% of our MCAT money comes in through regular and special ed transportation and special education private placement funds. There used to be a number of other components that were a little larger. Those got rolled into the evidence-based funding amount. So it's part of our base funding minimum. So when I modeled actually reductions in MCATs, I really only focused on the three big hitters. There are some other very, much smaller pieces that fall in the MCAT category. But again, we think that it's likely that the state is going to be tinkering with reductions in MCATs more so than evidence-based funding, based on what we're hearing at the moment. Although that is all, like many things, that is all subject to change. So what I'm going to do is, oh, I'm not going to do that. Hang on. I'm going to, let me just reshare the screen. And I'm going to pause it for a moment while I just switch over to the model that I want to show you. All right. So what you should see at this point is a graphic that shows our post-committee, the whole meeting from January. So this is ending fund balance for operating funds. And what you can see is this is the same graph that we looked at before. It's just stripped down. I don't have the 25 and 40% bars on there. And the first thing that I want to do is I want to talk a little bit about what happens when we make assumptions around tax collection rates. And this is an important factor for the district. And the idea around this particular factor is that when economic conditions are hard, taxpayers may either delay paying their taxes or may not pay their taxes at all, end up getting foreclosed on, and then the county does a sale for overdue taxes. So the thought is, we may see a reduction in tax collections. And the way that we model that is, I can make an adjustment, but that adjustment ends up being a five-year adjustment. So I'm going to show you two different things. So the first thing I want to show you is what happens if instead of a 99% collection rate, which is what we've been using for a number of years, if we assume a 95% collection rate. And this is something that if we get to 95%, it may be that it's 95% and there's recovery in out years from that. We also have to think about the nature of our tax base to determine whether 95% might be a reasonable assumption or not. Industrial tends to be pretty good. You have to take a look at the, you know, the commercial markets, which are under pressure and what's happening within homeowners in our community. But if we, if we think about a 95% collection rate, here's what that model looks like. So all I changed was a collection rate from 99% per year for five years to 95% per year for five years. And this is, it's a really dramatic reduction in our fund balance. Now, what might be a little more realistic is if we think about what would happen. Right now, the economy is in a rough patch. We might see a short-term drop in tax collection rates. So what I also modeled was a 95% reduction. And then for next year, then coming back, so only about half of the impact of that in the year after, and then back to a 99% collection rate in the out years. So that would be presuming that we're not going to be looking at 95% for all five years, but that the economy will change a little bit and eventually we'll get back to the historic norm collection rate. And as you can see, that is definitely not, you know, not as bad of a reduction. So what I've also done is modeled it at a 97%. So here, I'm going to take off the 95 for a moment and I'm going to put, here's 97%. If 97% stays for five years. And here's what 97% looks like. If it's sort of like a 97, then up to 98 and then back to 99. So in just comparing what that looks like from a 95 to a 97, I'll put all of them on so you can see what they look like. So what I've done with some future modeling that I'll show you tonight is I've actually taken out the five-year assumptions where it stays at a very low collection rate for five years, but actually is down and then starts to come back over a two-year period. So that was the first thing that I wanted to show you is the impact, and that is an important impact. Now give me a moment and I will, I'm going to set up the next, the next look at some other factors for you.
Dave, I just want to make sure I'm understanding that this is, this is what will happen to our fund balance if we do nothing in terms of any other.
That is correct.
No.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, this is, what I'm doing is trying to show you one look, one item at a time. If we presume that nothing else changes within our model, what happens? So if the only thing that happens is that we end up with a 97% collection rate in fiscal '21, going to approximately a 98% in '22 and then goes to a 99% in '23, then what you see is the outcome in fund balance. And that presumes nothing else changes in any of our January assumptions.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm just getting this set for you. Give me just one moment.
I just like to welcome those who may be joining us. I understand we are live now. We were having some technical difficulties and started the meeting, didn't want to delay any longer with the promise that the meeting was being recorded and that we were going to post it later in its entirety, so, which we will still do.
All right. So what I have here is sort of starting clean again with, again, the January model after the committee, the whole meeting. And so what, what you've seen is, you know, here's, here's what these couple look like with the reduction in the tax collection rate. So you've seen that already. So let me show you what happens if we end up with a drop in CPI. So right now, you know, things are looking low on the CPI side. And there's a little bit of a lag in CPI. So the, of course, the year-over-year CPI affects the following year's levy maximum amount. But this is an assumption that once we, that we get out and we look at a drop in CPI to 1.5%, then it goes up to 1.75% and then is at a 2% after that. 2% had been the underlying assumption that the board had, once we had gotten into out years. And then here's a, you know, just to give you an idea of a little more moderate assumption is, what if it just goes down to 1.75 for this next year and then comes back up to 2? So you can see what these, what the drops are. Material drops, but not as large of a drop as we saw when we changed the assumption around the tax collection rate. So something else that's fairly large impact is what happens if the state reduces the number of mandated categorical payments? Now, there's really two different things that happen with mandated categorical payments that the state can do. One is to delay payments or basically not make them, which makes them overdue. And then eventually you recoup them at some point in the future. The other thing they can do is prorate it. That is, the state could acknowledge, you deserve X number of dollars, but we don't have money to pay X number of dollars. So we're going to give you 80% or 50% or 20% of that and then call it done. So it's no longer overdue, but you still didn't get all the money that you were looking for. So of those two scenarios, what I prefer is that the state make it a late payment at a full amount or a mild proration rather than a timely payment at a deep proration. So I'd rather have the promise to get it later and get all of it or most of it than get a little tiny dribber drab of it now and call it done. So this assumption is taking a look at what happens if next year the state only provides two mandated categorical payments. Now, we normally get four. For these programs that I talked about, we typically, the payments are split into four. So right now, we have received, for this year, we've received three payments from the state. One payment is an overdue payment from last year. And the state has been generally making four payments a year. And it's typically been one overdue payment and three current payments. So we have this year, one overdue payment and two current payments. Many business managers are not expecting that we'll see a fourth payment this year. So if that happens, what, you know, what this is really contemplating in terms of a model is that next year, we get two late payments. That is, during the next fiscal year, we would get the two overdue payments from this fiscal year. And that's it. The year after that, we would get three of the four overdue payments from the prior year. And then we would be back to getting four payments each year. Some would be late as well from that model. So as you can see, this is a fairly significant reduction in fund balance. So even though state funding is not, is only 10% of our budget, it is something that's out of our control and the mandated categoricals are an important revenue source for us. And failing to receive them over time can have a negative impact on the district. Now, the other thing, we think back in time that can happen, which has happened in the past, is that the state's fallen behind and then they've caught back up. So if they do that, what happens is you end up with a timing issue where you can be light one year and then heavy the next. So if you budget for four and the state makes five, you end up with a surplus that you were not anticipating. And on the other hand, what we're thinking about for this year is that we've budgeted four. We may only get three, in which case we'll be light on state revenue. So that's something that can happen. All right, so there's mandated categoricals. The next couple of things that I want to show you, there are three things I want to show you are on the other side of the fence. Rather than talking about revenue reduction, these are talking about, you know, levers that we might push to try and manage the expense side of the equation. So I wanted to give you an idea about if we were to do certain things, what kind of an impact that has. And again, this is, these are things that we would, we would do in response to other economic conditions, but I'm only modeling them on their own. So the first is, if we were to take a look at, at holding wage growth at the assumed CPI, what we see is that, and this is forcing everyone at CPI, that we see, we actually have a little bit of savings there because we don't have any wages that are growing above CPI. So that's one. Another is, and we take a look at some of these secondary levers. This is controlling spending on purchased services and supplies. So if we were to hold those at, in capital at zero, you can see that we do have some favorable impact that results from that. And then the last thing I modeled is what happens if we have a staffing reduction. So, you know, here, this is really a reduction in staff. Where I was working on a million dollars in salary reductions in staff plus benefits. So I didn't identify any particular people or anything around that. This was just working to a number, just so that you'd get an idea about what happens if we reduce staff and have associated cost savings from benefits as well. So I'm just going to turn all these on for you for a second. You know, it's obviously a wide pattern of different options. And this is looking at things one at a time. So what I would like to do is, is right now, just pause this for a moment and switch back to, switch back to my PowerPoint. And now I want to talk a little bit about putting some of these pieces together because we wouldn't have these typically in a one-at-a-time standalone scenario. So what I did is I put together three different, what I call three different COVID scenarios, a moderate, a conservative and an optimistic. And of course, these are my take at what these might be. And there's nothing magical about the particular assumptions that I assume, but I wanted to try and give you, board members, a flavor for what the spectrum might look like. And of course, any of these can be modeled in different ways with different assumptions underlying them. So what I have are some assumptions around negative impacts on the revenue side as well as responses that we might do on the expense side. So what we would likely do is try to get a better understanding on the revenue side before we would actually implement too many decisions or make too many decisions around what responses we might do. So again, this is presuming some things and maybe is getting a little ahead of ourselves. Well, I want you to make sure that you get a chance to feel, to get a feel for this. Now, as time goes by, we'll get a better feel around some of our assumptions, which will help guide our responses. And we may find that one of these scenarios or an alternate scenario derived off of one of these starts to be a little more likely. So give me just a moment and I will bring those up for you so that you can take a peek at those. All right, so here again, I'm going to start with the post-committee, the whole meeting model so that you can again, see that as a baseline. So this is, this is the same we've been talking about. And board members, if you remember back to the slide that I showed you a little earlier, and I'll show you for all of these, I'll show you that same colorful slide that includes the upper and lower bound on our fund balance policy. But just as a reminder that this 43 million is right around in the last year in 2025, that's right around the 25% level. So we take a look at, you know, at a moderate case. So again, this, this assumes, well, actually, I should probably, give me a moment. I should probably show you what those assumptions are. Seeing as I had that in my presentation and I got so excited about showing you the model, I just went right to the models. But let me actually tell you what Um, but, uh, let me actually tell you what these look like. Moderate case, um, uh, reduction in tax collection and CPI and MCATs. Okay. I have to tell you, modeling the interest rate reduction was a bit of a bear. Um, so I actually, it's the same reduction in interest over all, all three of these models. I didn't adjust it just because it was, um, it, it was sort of a pain to, um, to drop in. Um, I've got staffing down 12 FTE, looked at the overall that I used was 22. That was just the number that worked out to be the, um, about a million dollars in salary plus benefits. So this is, um, this is a little lower than that. Um, then what I have is the conservative, uh, which is, uh, further reduction in, in tax collection, a bigger drop in CPI, um, a, um, a, a bigger drop in, in mandated care categoricals, where it's two and then two again, uh, larger reduction in the staff costs, uh, bigger cut in supplies. And it's actually a cut in supplies and purchase services, uh, rather than holding flat. Also a reduction in capital spending. Um, and then, and the optimistic case, it's a, it's a drop, but a, a minor drop in tax collection, um, a, a minor drop in CPI, uh, quick recovery in MCATs. And I actually regaining one of the overdue MCATs in, um, in FY '23, uh, flat staffing and a minor growth in supplies and purchase services. So here's what that looks like, um, so that you can sort of see them on a side by side basis. Sorry, I got a little bit ahead of myself there and, and showing you the, and showing you the models. Uh, but here's what, here's what this plays out like. Um, you know, on the moderate, uh, scenario, so you can see, you know, we have a drop here. Um, the, the conservative actually has got a steeper drop initially, but they're also in the model that I did, because I was modeling some responses to that. Uh, there were some deeper cuts that happened as well, which played out, um, in the end. Um, and then on the optimistic case, you can see this has got the, the, the most minor drop early on. Uh, but then there again, um, the cuts, uh, or adjustments, the responses that were made in out years, uh, were not as significant. So some of the structural, um, you know, trends that, that happen, you know, with this drop off in, in fund balance here in our base model, we start to see that replicate in the out years of the optimistic case, because that recovers most quickly to that, but has the, the larger hit to overall fund balance. So, uh, that, that's what these, uh, these look like, um, for this particular, um, set of assumptions. All right. And I told you that I would show you these, uh, these charts as well, so that you'd be able to get a look at that. So this first one is that conservative model that, um, uh, that I showed you. Uh, and what you'll see is, you know, that the ending fund balances were, were not horribly different on those three models. So you're going to see these look actually fairly similar. Um, you know, this is the moderate case, um, and then here is the optimistic case. So in fact, the, um, uh, the moderate and optimistic cases ended at the, the ending fund balance over five years was, was very, very close on those, uh, coincidentally, based on the assumptions that were built in. I did not, I did not jury rig it so that would be the case. Um, it, I did go back and double check it because I was a little surprised. I'm like, oh, it just so happened that based on the inputs, uh, that I made, those models came out to be right about the same. So there are other things that I did not model, um, in here, yeah, that may have some financial impact that bears some additional, um, investigation over time as we try to refine those, both from a budgeting perspective and forecasting perspective. Now unemployment, um, uh, payments for unemployment and unemployment insurance, um, is something that may change if there's reductions in force. Workers comp, other insurance rates may change over time. Uh, we're likely to see some changes in how some of our, our, our student groups, clubs and activities, um, are operated and the types of revenues and expenses that they experience. Um, and we may have some other responses around trying to provide the right kinds of programming for our students as a result. Uh, if we have continued shutdown, you know, there's impacts on rental income, uh, impacts on food service, uh, potentially changes in contracts around food service in order to respond to, uh, whatever our reality is and the needs of our students in the district. Uh, we may see changes in Medicaid reimbursement because of reduction in, um, in reimbursable services, uh, changes in substitute costs, cleaning costs, utility costs, fuel costs. Um, so, uh, you know, there are a number of other things that can change as, um, as this happens that we do need to be thoughtful around, um, and, and we're only starting to understand what some of those will be. And as, uh, next year becomes more clear, uh, we'll also have a better idea as to how do we budget around some of these. Some of these are important, but they're, they're not driving, um, they're not the big drivers for us in terms of the overall big picture that I tried to describe with you, with you or the rest of the modeling. So that, that ends the, the slides and the, and the, the dialogue that I had around some of these factors. Uh, would be happy to, um, participate in a conversation with you around the models and what you've seen.
Thank you, Dave. Um, so I will just, um, I guess I just want to say one thing real quick. You know, the, I think for me, the goal of kind of having this, um, presentation wasn't to solve all the problems tonight. It is more about having a greater understanding for how, when some of those levers are moved, um, how it impacts our budget. And, you know, one of the things, you know, in Dave's model, models is, you know, like when you took one of the scenarios, it's I, uh, the optimistic case, I just pulled it up. You know, there was an assumption of a 98% tax collection rate flat. And if you remember in our, um, our assumption sheet, you know, sometimes we make an assumption in one year and then we change it in for the next year. And so, um, just something to think about. And I don't think having, I'll just say for myself, having gone through this before, where we've been on, um, on entering uncertain territory. We've tried to be conservative, but yet not, um, overzealous in our adjustments because, um, you don't know what you don't know for sure, but you don't necessarily, at least it was out, this board's, the board's philosophy at the time, you don't want to make draconian changes that you can't recover from because, um, because you're having a, uh, a challenge for a couple of years or something like that. So, um, that's just my perspective, having gone through this before. So, um, again, we're not trying to solve or recreate, um, our budget tonight. I'm hoping that at a future meeting, we can revisit our assumption chart based on all of this information. But in the meantime, um, are there any questions for Dave?
And Penny, before the questions come in, I just want to be clear that the, the three models that I showed you at the end presumed that the tax collection rate would drop and then recover over a two-year period.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'm glad you said that.
Yeah. Just want to make sure everybody understood that.
Sorry. I know it's a lot to digest and if we just want to leave this here and digest it and come back and ask questions at a future meeting, that's fine too. But, um, reactions or questions from the board at this time?
Is it possible, Dave, to get those, those snapshots that you just shared with us embedded in this presentation? So we can look at them side by side?
Yes, yes. Uh, and, uh, we'll send those out after the meeting.
Okay. And, and you said if, that you, so like in the, I'm looking at my chart here. So the moderate case, it had a 97% tax collection rate. So that was just for the one year and then it comes back up?
That's correct. And, uh, it's, it's a little, it's a little tricky the way that I've got to model that in that I, I can't, I don't have the ability to change the tax collection rate, um, by year. So what I can do is actually model what happens, um, in, in the first couple of years and then sort of cha- and then just, well, I do it behind the scenes a little bit. So it's not exactly a 97, 98, 99, but it's awfully close to that. So, and it's not a 90, 95, 97 and a half, 99, but it's close to that.
I think it might also be helpful to, if, if it's possible to show what our tax collection rate, what happened to it, um, back during the recession, because I don't think it, it changed very much. So if we could get that as well, um, that would be a good thing for us to be able to look at too.
All right. I'll, I'll certainly see if I can, if I can provide that, uh, as well.
Dave?
Yes?
Um, the levers, you said we can control some costs and cannot others, or some more than others. Could you provide us more detail on that?
Sure. That, it, something like, um, like staffing, um, is something that, that is within the district's control. And so we can determine what our staffing levels are and to an extent, uh, wage growth, um, to the extent that, uh, once contracts are, um, are being renegotiated. So that is something that's within our control. Um, something like the consumer price index, um, has an impact or the tax collection rate has an impact on the district. But there's nothing that we can do about it. So we can't actually proactively do something that will affect those in any way.
I'm talking about the costs, the levers you said. You had costs on both sides in a general category, some we can control and some we can't. I'm not talking about revenue streams.
Okay. All right. Sorry. I, yeah, sorry, Mike. I misunderstood. Yeah. And I think special ed is, you know, is a, is a great example of that. So we're obligated to provide special education services to students who, who are eligible. Um, but we, we don't control who moves into our district or who moves out of our district. So, um, one of the, one of the realities that school districts across the country deal with, and we deal with every year as well, is that you never know exactly, um, your student population. So based on student needs, um, you have to provide appropriate services. So you may find in some years, those costs go down, in some years, those costs may go up. Um, so that becomes something that is, is difficult to say, oh, that's our budget and we're absolutely going to stick with it and we'll never go over that. Because if there's a particular student need, we, we meet the student needs and then we look other ways to try and offset that additional expense when possible.
I appreciate that. Would it be difficult to kind of come up with a list of costs that are very, more variable and others that are more fixed? Kind of give us, provide that information to us as part of the information?
Um, that's, that's certainly something we can look at. It probably would be, you know, some higher level categories in, in, um, in trying to do that.
Okay. And I'm glad you brought up staffing because I had one question on that. You used headcount as a, as a category, right? Do we have an average cost that we associate with headcount? Or wouldn't, wouldn't it be more, um, accurate to use a dollar amount for staffing? I'm just wondering.
Yeah, Mike, in, in effect, what I did was use a dollar amount. Um, but the way the model works is I, I have a couple of variables that are behind the scenes. One variable is salary, the other one is headcount. And so I put them in to drive a particular dollar value. So what I was working toward was a million dollars of salary. Um, and then the benefits lay on top of that. Of course, the benefits are driven by headcount, but, um, but I, I sort of worked the numbers to try and get there, um, as opposed to, because that's the way the model works, um, as opposed to try and define particular jobs or anything like that.
So what is the dollar amount then that you're using for headcount? A million, you said?
Yeah.
That's total, including salaries and benefits?
No, that was the, the salary only amount. So what you saw in the, 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 what I called the 22 FTE reduction equated to a million dollars of salary benefits on top of that.
Okay. Thank you. And we have an average benefit cost per person, uh, percentage wise of salary. So would, would it be like another 30% or 25% of the million on top for benefits?
Probably closer to 40.
40?
Yeah. You have to take, and, and some of that depends on, on the, the classification of the employee. Um, IMRF costs are different, you know, pension costs on IMRF side are different than TRS costs. And, um, your benefit packages are, are a little bit different. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey Dave, uh, real quick in your modeling, um, how, cause in, in our receipt of cash, everything kind of lags a little bit. So how does that factor into your model?
The, the model is structured to, uh, to pick up the, uh, you know, the, the big one being the levy year. Um, and it's sort of when CPI applies. So it actually picks that up and models that where you end up with a slight lag, um, because of that. So you put in some of the assumptions by levy year, you put other assumptions in by fiscal year. Um, and then the model sort of drops them into the right category. So, so the, the, the levy year, the, the assumptions around, um, the, uh, tax collection rate are dropped in by levy year.
So levy year, and then obviously our categoricals and like even like as simple as like reimbursement from transportation. Like, like, how is that all going to fall? Because our reimbursement transportation is going to go way down this year.
Right. Yeah. So this, yeah, Gavin, you know, I'm glad you brought that up because I think that it's, it's important to touch on. Yeah, that the, the transportation, um, is lagged by a year. So this year, what we're supposed to be receiving is the reimbursement that's associated with last year's expense. So when we think about next year's budget, what we're supposed to be receiving next year is actually, um, the reimbursement for this year's expense. Right now, um, yeah, since we've been, we, we stopped, um, having classes, um, sorry, stopped having students, uh, transported as of March 13th. Um, if we incurred no other expenses, it's about a, a 25% reduction in the expense for the year. Uh, obviously if the board agrees to, um, to some compensation for BTC that would, under an, uh, an addendum, uh, that is reimbursable. So that may change that number a little bit. But really, when we look forward a year, uh, what we would assume is that we would be seeing a lower reimbursement. Now, if we're transporting students for a full year next year, we'll have a full year of expense and we'll only have, right now, three quarters of a year of reimbursement, um, coupled with a, um, a drop in some of the, the pre-K student categorization based on, uh, the way the state is in our recent audit, they want to re-categorize that. So we'll also lose a little bit of reimbursement on top of that. So that causes actually a large, um, swing in, on the revenue and expense equation for the district, which if just those things happen, uh, can really have, uh, make it a challenge to drive a balanced budget simply because of the timing of the payments. Uh, what I did Gavin in modeling this was taking a look at what the payments are that would be late. Uh, and so I, I would assume that if we get two late payments next year, they're payments that are based off of last year's reimbursement that we would receive next year. Um, then in the following year, we'd be looking at late payments. That would actually be payments for reimbursement of expense from this year. Uh, so, you know, I, I made some adjustments in, in, and dropped those down to try and offset, uh, what I think are some likely reduced claim eligibility. And whether we think about it as, uh, payment timing or it's, uh, reduction in proration. I mean, that one's, it's a bit squishy to try and figure out what are those numbers really going to be? I don't know, but they have a lingering impact on the district because of that, uh, the issue of the timing. So the quicker we're back to transporting students full time, the easier it's going to be to try and project what our future reimbursements will be.
I hear you, but we've always been very cognizant of keeping a very small fund balance to take care of our taxpayers. And when I look at kind of our modeling and projections, it's not going to take a lot to move something in one direction or the other. We have very little control over wage growth. Uh, we just negotiated, uh, you know, the, the, all the contracts not that long ago. So we have very little control over that. So when we think about staffing levels and then all the- when we think about staffing levels and, and others, I mean, I, I think your modeling is good, but I also think we could have a very quick deterioration in our fund balance if we're not careful on how we manage expenses.
Well, that, that is certainly possible, and, you know, one of the challenges right now is trying to figure out which set of events will play out. And you're right, as, as I tried to show on the charts, you know, a drop in MCATs has an important impact, you know, that plus a, a drop in collection rates really have a large impact on district fund balance. So those are things that, that are important. Oftentimes, what districts do, for some of the reasons that you've mentioned, is, is take a look at headcount as part of the solution to very difficult financial situations. And, you know, it's, it's no secret that for us and for most districts in our area, close to eighty percent of our expense is salaries and benefits. So when we try to take a look at, how do we cut around the edges to reduce supplies and purchase services, and some things like that to try and, and help when revenue gets down or is significantly negatively impacted? It's, it's really hard to do that, because you have to make very large cuts on, on the remaining twenty to twenty-five percent of your expense in order to move the ship quite a bit. So, and you're right, that the, you know, contracts are, are in place for a period of time. And so you really get to only nibble around those sort of at the end. And if you've got a multi-year contract in place with, with employees, you don't get to see a short-term impact. And that is, it, it's a difficult part of, of school finance and difficult part of board decision-making if it comes to that. I think right now, what a lot of districts are trying to do is to, is to understand an evolving situation to try and determine what an appropriate response is at this point, and to try and do some things that position the district to be able to manage expenses without, I think as Penny said, you know, without going too drastic early on. And there's always opportunities to make other changes as we move forward over the coming months.
I think the other thing that is worth noting is the timing. The timing of everything happening is unfortunate, because we're so close to the end of this fiscal year and the beginning of the next. More often than not, when we were having these conversations before, we were having them as, you know, in that meeting in January or February, where we were building our assumptions. And so based on our assumptions, we knew the trajectory of our line, and we were able to identify, you know, a need to reduce a specific amount of money. And then, instead of, you know, us picking what and choosing where that would come from, we would ask the administration, you know, if we were to need to reduce X, what might that look like? And we would ask the administration to do that, so. Unfortunately, the timing, the kind, timing's very challenging right now, because we don't have a lot of time, nor a lot of opportunity to make changes that would be largely significant. Now, there are things that we can do, and so I guess to kind of set up a future conversation, I guess I would ask the administration, if the board agrees, to help us understand at a subsequent meeting the changes that we could be making right now and the effect that that would have on next year's budget.
I, I agree with you, Penny, but how much time do we have in order to do that?
We don't approve the budget until September. I know it's strange.
I'm talking, if, if we were to do a headcount reduction, do we even have that flexibility?
The only, no, because if you remember, contractually, we would need, if we were doing a large reduction in force, we would have to have done that before spring break. However,
That's kind of what I'm saying. That's kind of the issue.
Well, there's, if I remember right, we did give Brian, I think, four contingency FTE. I don't know if they, they have been hired yet. I don't know if the staff has backfilled retiring positions already. You know, every year there's some attrition, and we usually backfill those positions. But I think that what we would, I think before we would, timing is of the essence, I think, but I think we would have to understand the ramifications of making those decisions, too. And what opportunities are there at this time? So it's a little, until we rebuild, we take another look at our assumption sheet, though, we don't know where we think we're gonna end up. So to me, that-
Percent agree with you. But the timing of the essence. And we have summer projects that, that we have a couple million bucks in. We have a lot of other areas that if, if we are going to be short on fund balance, we should strongly consider now versus waiting, because I think we all know that this pandemic is not going away anytime soon. The state of Illinois is not in a position to probably make four categorical payments next year, and I, I have a high level of concern that some of our larger counties might defer some of the tax payments, which is just a cash game. I think we'll get our money back, but we only have, you know, thirty, forty million dollars fund balance, and that will dissipate quickly.
So you want, you would, you wanna give direction tonight?
Not tonight, but, but in, in very short order.
Well, that, I was suggesting that our next step is to take another look at that assumption sheets. We can change some of those assumptions we've made in order to understand what we're looking at.
Okay. And having additional information could help with that conversation. The request I made about the costs we can control versus the ones we can't, I think is important. And in, in general, I think everybody knows this, but businesses, other enterprises, right, in the face of large unknown information, large unknowns, you're conservative until you know, until you get more information. So I think we will be getting more information. The question is when and what information, right? So, so probably as soon as June, we'll get more information.
So do we want to, we have a meeting next Tuesday night. Do we want to set aside time at that meeting to go through the assumption sheet again?
Can David provide a little more detailed information on the costs where we have control over before then?
I can certainly pull-
I mean, today's Tuesday already, and Thursday's our packet. The challenge is-
It would be at a high level. Yes, we can show you what things that we, because here's the thing, to Gavin's point, you know, we're in a short timeframe here, and that's why if we're gonna make some changes in the budget preparation, I mean, we're right in the middle of it right now. Dave and his team, and we're all, all the cost center people are doing this right now. But if we're gonna, if the board wants to change some of those assumptions, which, you know, arguably, I would agree. I think you should, on a few of them, a few of them. I, that's my opinion. I don't know that I would go through and change everything, okay? I don't think we have the verification that that's prudent. But I do think a conservative approach here on the revenue side certainly makes some sense, okay? At least, you know, in rethinking, different than what it was in January. There's no doubt about it. Now, whatever you assumptions you make on the revenue side, then we have to react on the expenditure side, right? And that's what I think we're trying to get at here. The revenue assumptions are the key right now. And then we can make the recommendations or make the adjustments, and the board can provide guidance there on what we do on the, on the expense side, right? Truthfully, I think that's a little easier. Not, it's not, you know, it's not, how should I say this? It's not pleasant on the expense side, but it's a little easier, because we're even in a shorter window here. You know, we're not gonna be able to do massive reductions in certified staff. We have some play right now in vacancies that are still out there. And we have, we have some, okay? Approximately twenty, twenty-five certified staff right now, that just have not been given contracts for next year. The classified staff, which is the other area, we have significant latitude on the classified staff. It's much different than certified. Certified, we have to follow the law, and we have to give, you know, property right notice and all that.
Before we go down the path of where the money might come from, can we work to identify how much we think we need?
Yeah, that'd be great. I'm just trying to give, you know, set up my guest about the clarity. Those are the things we have control over. Thank you. Yeah, that's fine.
So Penny, just a really quick question. I know you don't want to get into specifics and like ideas about how we're going to, you know, cut expenditures and things like that. But if we were to, like, pull back any of the summer projects, what is the, like, what is the date that we would have to do that by? Or are we beyond that?
We're beyond that.
Is there anything that we could do to revisit some of those projects, or?
Is there anything that hasn't, that where the vendor hasn't been notified that they received the?
Dave, I guess I'll turn to you. I think we issued all those contracts.
We did. Yeah, those, those are out, and and vendors are, they're working on them. Some have been, smaller ones have been completed, others are, you know, supplies are ordered, you know, they're doing their mobilization. We've awarded all of those. So those are, those are in place.
Well, are there any terms in those contracts that, you know, relate to any sort of act of God or things like that that would make it difficult to perform on those contracts at this point, or? Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious. I, you know, I, because we're so far along, you know, I'm seeing if there's anywhere that we could look at clawing back or changing course.
Yeah, I, I would have to go back and, and probably consult with the, with our district attorney if we wanted to get out of those. I, I don't know whether we would be able to, or that we would, we might be able to get out of it, but a portion of our funds, I would have to take a look at, at the details. It, it's gonna vary based on, on the project.
One thing, though, again, and I don't wanna, good that you bring up summer projects, Angela, and it's not something, I don't wanna, again, solve all this tonight, right? But one of the things that we have done over the past few years is if we have had fun, you know, extra money at the end of the year, I hate to call it extra, but we have made transfers into the capital projects fund. And so one of the things that we can look at, you know, or Brian can look at, and when we, if we ask him to make a reduction of some kind, is the, you know, can we supplement some or all of our summer project spending out of summer projects? As opposed to out of our regular budget?
You mean capital projects?
Yes, I'm so sorry. Yeah, fund summer projects out of capital projects, yes. And that would provide, you know, a little relief for our regular budget. It's just one of the ways to help, one of the ideas to, to help out a little bit. So.
We've done that a couple of times in our past, too, and even been able to try to replenish it as well. Maybe plans to replenish when we've had to.
I would say I, I'm uncomfortable with that, just from the standpoint that we have so much uncertainty right now. I, I think all of our fund balances are critically important as we continue to navigate through this, because we have contractual obligations with the, you know, the contracts that we recently negotiated, so keep that in mind as we kind of move forward.
Well, I think that in the end, it's, we're just gonna have to make a judgment about where the money's gonna come from. You know, and a judgment about, yeah, just a judgment.
Yeah, I don't want to rule out anything at this point, right? We should look at all of the options and understand what those balances are. I mean, the summer projects is not in, in the realm of our budget. It's a small number, but it could be impactful at this time.
So, our, is, it seems logical to me, feel free to disagree, that the next step would be for us to take a look at that assumption sheet again. And have us drop in some numbers, make some tweaks where we would like to, where we think we should, and then have Dave run the numbers again, and then find out what our line looks like and how we want to react to that.
Does anyone- Nick, can I, a suggestion? What if we go backwards on our summer calendar and look at when we need to make the final decisions on this, and then go back two meetings to, to look at the assumptions, and then one meeting to look at what the ideas are to make it balance if, if we're looking at a reduction in revenue. Does that make sense? Like, because we've got two meetings in June, we've got, you know, one more meeting this month.
I mean, truthfully, we should have done this months ago if we were gonna do it.
Right, but it's, it's now.
So I, I'm trying to understand what what you're, I mean, we need to make these decisions as soon as possible. So if there's a date that you were thinking about, what would that be?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're suggesting.
I guess I was just gonna say to Brian, what's your, your deadlines of, you know, making these, these, these cuts or these reductions? What would be the, the hard deadline, and then back us up into meetings that we need to have to get it decided?
Well, I would suggest that we have this assumption conversation next Tuesday night, and make decisions, and be prepared to make those decisions, especially on the revenue side. Don't necessarily have to on the expenditure side, because that's something then we can look at as from a staff perspective and bring it back to the first board meeting in June, and say, okay, based on your revenue assumptions, here's what, you know, the board can weigh in on the expenditure side. That's fine, where you want us to take a look at. That'd be great. I mean, we can do that. But based on those revenue assumption changes, then we're gonna have to, you know, figure out where would those expenditure adjustments be made? Because what we typically do is we do typically do a budget update for the board in June. I mean, that's, if we're in normal circumstances, either the first or the, or the second board meeting in June, we kind of give you a tentative budget, you know, update. Okay, we're in good shape. Everything's looking like it's playing out correctly, right? And so, you know, if we, you know, to your point, Leah, and Penny's as well, that if we, next board meeting, a week from tonight, we, we go through that assumption sheet, and receive, you know, an adjusted assumption sheet based on this conversation. And then, you know, two weeks after that, we will bring back whatever, you know, we can model it, we can look at that, we'll bring it back, have that discussion on June, whatever it is, June first, I think it is, June second, whatever that day is, first meeting in June. And then, if we need to finalize anything, then we can certainly share what that looks like at the second meeting in June, and we'll be okay. We'll be okay. But we're gonna have to pedal fast, depending on the scope of what the board changes.
So just to drop the dates in then. At the meeting on May twenty-first, we would review the assumption sheet. On June second, we would see the outcome of those adjustments and the sensitivity, and we could give Brian and the administration some idea of a dollar amount that we've, if, if we get to that point that we would like him to look at reducing the budget by. And then he could go work on that with his staff, because that's a significant conversation, and bring that back to us at our following meeting.
That is correct.
So the only other thing, Penny, I would ask, and, and Brian and Dave, I don't know if this is possible, to Mike's point, do we, will we know next week when we talk about revenue, what our potential levers are when we talk about the bottom half of the income statement or the expense side?
I think Dave said that he would have some high-level ideas of that.
Yeah, board members, I, I am out of pocket tomorrow. So in terms of, and, and a good part of Thursday, so in, in terms of me having something for you for a board packet on Thursday, it, it would be difficult. But certainly from a high level, we can start to categorize some things. It just depends on if you get, if you want to get far into the details, it will be difficult for, for us to have too much detail there for you. But we can certainly start to talk about at least some general kinds of things that we're able to control and not control, and what the order of magnitude is for those.
I guess, I guess maybe a little question about, I want to make- I guess, I guess maybe a little question about, I want to make sure that we all understand what's being asked for. Are we trying to understand what it means if we, and this is a simple example, instead of assuming a 2% increase on supplies, what is it if there's a zero? Or i- is that the kind of information we would like Dave to have at our next meeting?
I can just speak from where I was coming from with the question, Penny. If we're going to look at our assumptions on revenue and make decisions as a board, without full information, I mean, these are going to be decisions without full information. And those decisions will have to be supported by actual, you know, real action, right? I mean, possible cuts to whatever it is, then, I mean, it would help me to make the, participate in that conversation about making those decisions if, if I had some idea of what, again, I like the word levers, and even if it were in estimated amounts, like even if it was high level, could it, could we get some information down to a certain number for, of cost number, say a quarter of a million, say 250,000. That's a pretty general number. I'm not asking, you know, down to the dollars and cents on each item, but some idea of what's possible from which levers we can still impact and which ones we cannot. We know we can't impact our wages, right? So that's what I was thinking.
I just want to make sure I understand. When I think of that assumption sheet, I think of, you know, the top is our assume, the assumptions on our income and expenses. And then when you get to the bottom, there's things like purchase services and fuel and some of our contracts and things like that. Are those the things that you're talking about, Mike?
I'm talking about any costs that we can still control.
That might be, I'm thinking that when, after we go through our exercise with the assumption sheet, and then we, we give that information to Brian and he'll bring that back to us with some choices and we'll take, we'll make our decisions based on, and those will be things that we can control. Am I correct there, Brian? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, Mike. I'm sorry, I was trying to understand, you know, after, if, if the board makes their, their decisions on how they want to change the assumptions as we prepare the budget, both on the revenue side and on the expense side, then we'll bring that back to you and show you what that looks like and what we're talking about. And then the board can either choose to accept that or tell us to go find something else. You know, and we can, yeah, I mean, that's, we're going to have to take a hard look at it in a very short window here, you know. And you're right, we are limited on May, you know, 12th, you know, compared to February 12th, you know, which is typically what goes on. You know, and what we're going to be able to reduce on the expense side.
So Brian, to Mike's point though, we're looking at the revenue side and there's two sides to the income statement. We really need to think about both sides of the income statement. And if we don't have any control on the expense side, we really need to think hard about the revenue side. And they both are correlated, so we can't look at one or the other. We need to look at them, you know, together. That's why I'm kind of struggling with it. I don't know how much latitude we have on the expense side, because the revenue side's totally out of our control.
I think we're talking about looking at both sides.
Yeah, definitely.
We have some, we do have, I mean, Brian mentioned a number of FTE. We do have some things that we have some control on, on the expense side. And I think those, that's one of the things that once we figure out where we're at on the assumption sheet, Brian's going to have to figure out and bring back to us.
So I, I, I think, which is a good thing, that Penny, you and I are the only board members that have gone through this process where we've made reductions, right? And so, in the past, we've always started with reviewing our assumption sheet, right? We go through the assumption sheet, we see what the model looks like, and then we provide a direction to the administration. And I think that, I'm, I'm just restating that. I think it's been said before, just to help everybody understand why Penny's asking what she's asking for us to do. If, I'm a little concerned that waiting till June 2nd might be too long if people are anxious already, right? So I, I don't know, I'll throw that out there. Do we want to wait till June 2nd or do we want to add another meeting? If that might be helpful.
Why don't we wait until, why don't we pose that question again next Tuesday? And after we see what we've got? Because we're, you know, maybe we add another meeting in between that meeting and the first meeting in June to review the model, you know, to see where we're at. But it's, it's still going to take, I think, the administration, I would hate to just give them one week to come up with something to show us with options of reduction. I think that that's, that might take a while, but is it okay if we have that, revisit that question in our next meeting?
That's fine with me. I just was throwing it out there for others.
Reactions from others on that?
I think that's, those are all great thoughts. And if it was, it would also be reasonable for the administration, in my opinion, to start looking at this stuff right now or tomorrow, as soon as they have time. Assuming, just safe to assume, we're going to want to take a conservative look because of all that we don't know right now.
Okay, so that, our current plan is on next Tuesday to take a look at their assumption sheet. And then proceed as we've described in terms of, in terms of sequence. If we add another meeting in between in order to, shave off some time, we can decide that next, at our next meeting. Do, is anybody objecting to that? Okay, thank you.
I clarify a couple of things, just so I, I make sure I understand. I've got my list here. I just want to make sure. Is that okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're going to send out those models that Dave shared tonight. The board will have those from those three different scenarios. That was what I heard, I believe. Also was asked, could we see the collection rates and how they were impacted there a decade ago when we had a recession, correct? And we will share what the actual con- collection rates were at that time, like starting in 08, 9, 10, 11. It was really kind of a four-year period before things evolved. The other thing I heard is to share a list of, you know, and again, I wrote down fixed and varied expenditures. Now, I think what we're talking about and based on this tale of this conversation here is what things are still in play. In other words, what are some things we can still adjust here in the short term? Is that a fair statement or is it, or not?
I think that's a fair statement, Brian. That's a fair statement.
You know, can I just ask a question though? Given the way our conversation kind of ended, I see value to that information, but I'm not sure what, if we get to the point where we're going to ask the administration to find a million dollars in order to help us have a balanced budget, they're going to be considering all those things too. I don't know if, if them spending time on that right now is necessary unless we really want to have that information. So if we really have a desire to have that information, let's, let's keep that on their list. But if, if going through this process will have things flow out and we'll get there eventually, that would be good to know. So I guess I'm asking everyone, do you want that information next week or do you want to wait until we go through the steps?
Personally, Penny, I would like to know what's in our control as we discuss the revenue line, but that's my opinion only.
I would agree, and it goes to David's slide PowerPoint of levers we can control and levers we cannot. When it comes to costs in particular, that was in the slide, that's what caught my attention. So if he's got that, I'm sure he, I'm sure he can come up, as long as we have that information and time to make good decisions. That's fine with me.
Hands for everyone who wants it Tuesday.
If possible.
I'm not sure I know what it is though. That's my, so that's why I didn't put a hand up.
Dave, what is your understanding for what's being asked for? Just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Well, that, that's a great question. And I think what, what I can do is start to work with Dr. Harris to talk about things that are under control. There are, there are a few. They fall in the categories of purchase services, supplies, capital, and headcount. And, and I think putting, what I'm understanding is that there's an interest in trying to understand what are the potential savings that could accrue to next year's budget? If the district were to make changes in any of those categories. And I, I don't know that we would have some of the details, particularly in the areas of supplies and purchase services to be able to say, oh, okay, board, here's, we're, we're buying two fewer boxes of paper clips. Like, that's where the savings comes from. But we can certainly quantify what the order of magnitude is if we were to make some changes on the supply side. And I think then there's a, a fair bit of staff work that would happen over more than a week to try and figure out how do we realize that? If, if that's the direction that we want to go. So that, I think that's my understanding. I hope that's what the board's looking for. I did see one thumbs up from.
Sure. And David, while you're at it, since you mentioned paper clips, if we have saved money due to this shutdown on anything material, whether it's utilities, paper, whatever it is, I guess I'd kind of like a number. And then we have the CARES Act aid of about 600,000 plus for any additional expenses we may have incurred, from what I heard. So it'd just be good to know, have that information.
We share that, I think.
Is that informa- and that would affect this current fiscal year's budget, not necessarily next year's fiscal budget, correct? Savings that we've realized from being shut down?
Yes, and, and I, I don't actually have all of that in a spot to be able to put together. So there's, you know, of course, something like utilities, there's a lag in utility bills, we're not done with the fiscal year. Transportation is a, is a significant one. I, I don't know how that's going to end yet. So there are a number of things that makes it harder for me to capture what I think all those savings will be at the end of this year.
Well, if you could pull together some of the information that you've heard board members requesting, that would be appreciated.
We can, we can definitely do a list on the expense side that shows, here's the things that's still in play for this preparation of this budget. We can do that. It'll be a high level and it'll say, here's the things that we can still make decisions on. Okay? There are some things that we can't, and we know what they are.
Okay, any other questions on this topic?
Wondering what happens with personnel decisions over the next couple of weeks. I mean, is it worth suggesting we kind of freeze any decisions for a couple of weeks till we see how things play out in terms of the, the, the riff and, and the, 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 the personnel that are kind of in question, that we say, don't hire back for a, a short time so we can kind of see where the other shoe drops? Or is that premature to make that kind of a decision or make that kind of request?
No, I think that would probably be wise to say that. I think, I was hoping it was implied, but I'm glad you're saying it. Is that what every, but does everybody agree with that?
I agree.
Yes.
Just for clarity then, if that's what the board is saying as a group, that we would not have a personnel report then next Tuesday night, is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I, let me, let me try to rephrase. I know there are some personnel items that we expect to have on that next Tuesday night. I think that what I'm hearing the board say is, as far as the four FTE that are contingent, contingencies right now, and the others that you referenced, the, the rehiring to replace retirees, if you could just hold on there.
Okay, because we do have some things in the queue. That's why I'm asking for clarification here, you know. And I think the board's aware of a few of those, right? And we have finalized the process on a couple of administrative roles and we finalized the process on a, a few teacher scenarios. But other than that, we can hold on everything else.
How does the board feel about that?
Would it be a problem to wait for, until the next board meeting to act on those finalized roles?
I say, I would think it will on a few of them, yes.
I think we can bring this up in closed session. And have, have a brief discussion about.
Sure.
Okay, so back to the, hold off on the four contingency FTE and the other items and we can finish this off. Is everybody in agreement with that?
That's no problem, and that's still a pretty significant opportunity. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. The other thing that was on the list was Dave was going to be checking, double checking to see the status of the summer projects to see if there was any possibility of pausing on those. That was the other thing I had written on my list of to-dos after this meeting.
Yes, and we have a facilities committee meeting on Thursday morning. So maybe we can talk more about that at that time.
Okay, can we move, we have two other things we need to handle, discuss right now. Also budget related, can we leave this part of our meeting this topic? Okay, thank you. We have two contracts that we are at the point of having to make some determinations for next year. And so, I don't know if I'm giving, turning this over to Dave or to Brian, but I know that there was discussion at the finance committee meeting about both of these contracts. And it was suggested that the entire board weigh in on this. So I guess I'll, in, in the essence of conserving time, has, do we, would we like the administration to kind of bring us up to speed on this? Or have we all read it and we just going to go right to questions? Okay, could we have a, a two-minute setup for, for?
I'll do it. And Dave, you can clarify anything that I either misspeak or leave out, okay? We have two vendor contracts here that we have for purchases in the purchase services, you know, arena, okay? One of them is the renewal for our custodial contract at Barrington High School, so ABM. We would be in the final year of that contract, then we would have to go back out to bid. We had the, the recommendation that was reviewed by the finance committee. That information was attached here today for a board discussion. During the finance committee meeting, they asked us to go back and see what, what it would look like if we were to reduce that amount even lower to what it was recommended there. We did that. That information was provided additionally today. We would, there were a quick summary. Uh, we would, the, the quick summary on that is, it would be a, um, somewhat of a reduction in service, pretty significant. And we would have some trailing impacts, as, as Dave mentioned in that information. Labor-related impacts there on that particular scenario. Uh, number two, uh, is the SEDEXO, uh, contract, which is our K food service. Again, that's an annual renewal that we review every year. We are in, we would be coming up on year two of that food service contract. And in that particular scenario, too, you saw, we had a very similar conversation. Uh, we had a recommendation for the renewal amount, and then the finance committee asked that we go back to the vendor and ask what it would look like if we were to reduce that amount. And it would be a pretty significant reduction in service, uh, directly related to that, if we were to reduce it. So what food service would look like at, at both elementary and middle school level? So that information's been provided, so that's the summary.
Okay, let's go to the custodial contract first. Do, does the administration have a recommendation?
The recommendation, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, was the original one that we brought forward to the finance to, uh, uh, consider the contract for the, uh, uh, 2.1% increase on the renewal of that contract, and that's listed there.
That was our recommendation, correct, Dave? Yes.
Okay. Questions, or I, I guess, just in, in essence of time, are there hands to support the recommendation? I know we're not, we're not officially voting tonight, but I'm just trying to figure out how much time we should spend on this.
So Penny, the, if we are not, we, we are only paying for the food received, correct?
We're, we're talking about the custodial contract right now.
Glitching, and I was like, I'm not sure what she said, I thought she said, okay, sorry.
That's right. Custodial first, then we'll move on to the food service.
Can I ask, I'm just wondering, reading the, uh, attachments you've, you've shared, is there a chance that there might be a custodial strike at the end of the summer if they can't come up with a contract? And if so, what happens to the care of the schools while they're renegotiating with their custodians?
There's, here's the thing, if we don't renew this contract as, as presented, or as, you know, even with the reduced cost that was suggested there by the vendor, then we have two options as of tonight. We can either move this contract forward, or we, we have to go out to bid. Because we have no custodial service starting July 1st at Barrington High School if we don't act on this contract or go out to bid for, uh, an additional service. So that's the reality that's sitting here in front of us, of the annual renewal of this contract. Now, Barry, to answer your question, you know, one of the things that, if we were to reduce this cost further than the recommendation, there is some significant concerns that we would have some labor action. Now, again, those employees aren't ours, but we have experienced that in the past, and they tend to, uh, do that job action on our property, uh, they don't do it in an office building in Downers Grove. So that's what, that's referencing.
And I just want to make sure I understand we're talking about an increase of $13,861.
That is correct. In that particular contract.
Okay. So I, I, um, don't remember, is there, a show of hands, is there anyone who, who could support just approving this as-is?
Can I ask, can I ask one quick question, Penny, before we do a vote? Brian, uh, when we think about what the school year is going to look like in the fall and over the summer months, what does that do to the contract as we think about additional cleaning throughout the facilities?
Yeah, it's a great question. You know, actually, I was just talking with Elliot today, Dave, uh, here in the office, and I asked that very question. You know, there is plenty to do over there, now they're pivoting, you know, it's not the typical clean. Uh, we've got a paintbrush in their hand right now. Uh, we've got other, you know, opportunities to be able to continue to use their services. There is also, um, you know, we know we'll be able to continue. Now, bottom line is, if we get into a long-term situation in the fall where, you know, we're running out of stuff, then we could definitely have the discussion at that time to furlough it, or, or, uh, you know, bring it back. But, you know, with, but those would have to happen at that time, and we're not prepared to do that today. That would be my sense of it.
So the question is, can you reopen the contract in the fall if we're back to school and, and our governor requires certain restrictions?
Dave, do you know the answer to that off the top of your head? I don't.
You know, it got a little glitchy there, I think what Gavin asked was, do we have the ability to reopen the contract if our conditions change in the fall? Is that, was that it, Gavin? Yeah, I, you know, the, I would have to pull up the, yeah, I believe that we do, but I'd have to pull up the legal language to confirm the provision uh, around which we would be able to do that. Yeah, ABM certainly has been, uh, flexible and cooperative in having conversations around uh, levels of service and, and what we're trying to accomplish. Uh, but I would have to go back and, and confirm the contract language and provision that would allow us to uh, suspend or terminate the contract in the event that we're closed for an extended period of time in the fall.
We can check that out and verify that.
And we write that into the renewal as well, and, and also maybe start to kind of lay out some of the alternative duties, you know, painting and things that you've just mentioned, to make it a little clearer in the contract?
We're, we're able to accommodate some of the painting and other activities that they're engaging in, much of which is maintenance that we just never normally have time to do at the, at the high school. They're doing that under the current contract, so I don't know that we would need to modify it um, to allow that, because we're able to do that under the current contract language. But the-
They're doing it now.
That it was clear in the contract, especially if there's, you know, you're anticipating some sort of like labor dispute or something. You know, I don't want our contract and, and what, you know, we believe that they're agreeing to, to be impacted by anything in the future, you know, if we do need to kind of change the direction of duties.
We've continued to work with them on what the cleaning tasks are, so I, I, I think there's, there hasn't been any question about whether the activities they're engaging in are, are current invalid, uh, and I don't know that, but, but certainly we can look at if we're going to be changing up uh, what it's going to be in any material way, uh, that, that could be contemplated in a subsequent agreement uh, with them or with the contract extension. And, you know, of course, regardless of the existing language, if there's not something that's there, your thought that we could put something in a renewal that says, if we need to furlough in the fall, absolutely makes sense.
Yeah, just like a couple of paragraphs, clean up any sort of, because these were unanticipated. So, the contract covers them, great, but, you know, I would think that we probably have other issues now that we, we're up.
We can definitely do that prior to next week.
I wanted to just clarify quickly, I think you said this is the last year of this contract, so we'd be going out to bid next year, correct?
A year from now.
Yep, okay. Hopefully, a little bit less than a year from now, right?
Yeah, yes, that's a good point, you're absolutely correct.
Okay, so, going to go back to my question. Who can support the recommendation? Okay, there's the majority. Okay, um, let's now look at the SEDEXO contract, and Angela, ask your question.
Payment is based on food provided, not a, a set fee for the entire year, correct?
It is correct, the, it, it is based on that, and, uh, we do have, you know, when the contract was bid, you know, we are, we do provide a volume. So there are some costs that get spread across the volume, so all vendors when they're bidding have an anticipation of expected volume. If the volume changes in a material way, um, you know, they, they may want to come back and have a different conversation about um, how that works. But right now, what we're anticipating, you know, from, and what happens in a normal course of business is, if it goes up, your revenue goes up and your expense goes up. If it goes down, your revenue goes down and your expense goes down, so they do tend to move together. Um, so we only get billed for meals that they, um, that they serve. Did I answer your question? I didn't put my glasses on, so I could, it was hard for me to see your, your facial expression.
No, it, it does, that's good, I was just disappointed in their response, you know, but you, you are not disappointed in your response, thank you. Disappointed in theirs.
So it's my understanding, based on what we saw, or what we have here, that, um, the administration went back to talk to SEDEXO about how they might be able to trim this a little bit, and we were given some options. So I guess, based on the information that we've received, how many people can move forward with what's presented here tonight?
So I wanted to just make sure I'm clear, Penny, you're asking if we can support, um, the lesser costs, but, and with the reduction of the options?
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I believe that the administration, I should have phrased that differently. What is, what's the administration's recommendation on this?
The original recommendation.
Which is an increase of 3%.
That is correct.
Okay. So how many people would like, can support the administration's recommendation? Okay, see, how many of us? Three? Okay, so I'm, I, I see four. Is there is there anything on here that can be? I don't know, is, is there something on here that, in terms of the reductions, that can soften it a little bit as opposed to just removing the entire 3%? Do you know what I'm asking? You know, to make, my understanding is the 3% annual renewal ensures a bunch of things. If prior to presenting a lower renewal rate option, SEDEXO shared several reminders with the district leadership on the current program, and so those were the things that were, um, making that the 3% increase would provide. If we were to lower that rate, things would change significantly. I guess, well, I, do we have four people again? I just want to see. Did we have four? Mike, were you a yes or a no? I'm sorry.
I was a yes, and I don't know why I'm not showing up on the camera here. Oh, I reversed this, that's right, okay, there we go.
Okay, so we have four, I'm just going to move this forward, then. Okay. Are there any other questions before we move into what I hope is a brief closed session? Okay. For the, for the viewing public, um, the board's now going to go into closed session. We will not make any decisions in closed session, uh, or we will not be voting in closed session, we will come back out into open session before adjourning the meeting, however, we will not take any action then either, so, we will resume our activities on Tuesday at our regularly scheduled time and station. So, um, is there a motion to go into closed session for purposes of discussing employment matters, perci- performance of a specific employee, collective negotiating matters, litigation matters, security procedures, student disciplinary matters, and the purchase, lease, or sale price of real property?
Sandra, so moved.
Angela, second.
Roll call, please.
Gavin Newman?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Mike Shackleton?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Motion passes.